We are back. Yes. Give it up, give it up, give it up. Episode eighty-one. Man, it has a support cast. Listen.
It was in two years.
My guy, that would be in, I think, is it July or something? Yeah, man, it's crazy. But yeah, it is Easter season for those who are celebrating. Happy holiday to you guys. But most definitely, I welcome you guys to this special episode. Lots of wonderful things to see. I am joined by our guys, Sichis, by my immediate left, and then Oscar, by my far left. All of them looking all wonderful and all good. How you guys celebrate? I don't know, like, how you guys handle the holiday? Trust me, I didn't even know that this week was Holy Week. I can't lie to you. I'll tell you now, I went to Walmart on Friday. Nobody, no, nowhere was open.
For, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know everywhere was gonna be like closed.
Closed, have you?
Yeah.
Now everywhere was off. And then yesterday, I just had to go out, get some stuff, was cooking all through for some.
Are you cooking for Easter celebrations? You're just cooking for the week?
I'm just cooking, man. Like, I was cooking because I, like, my week is gonna be busy. And then I couldn't just afford to not have food. But I also started eating nonsense.
Yeah, that always happens, man. That always happens. Once you don't have, you just be like, see, anything, you know, your ordering or your eating chips, you're just, you're just going, man.
Yeah. And then I don't want to go out of my way, like, with regards to my diet. But yeah, it's what it is. So how did you guys celebrate today now? I won't lie to you guys, man. Like, I just cleaned, I just rested. Like, that was all I did. I did not, of course, like, I wish my family, like, happy Easter and all, but how about you guys?
Me, like, the only thing I did was, I went to church.
Ah, you went to church finally?
Was. Was finally. No, I didn't go to church normally.
You didn't go yet?
Yeah, I didn't go to church.
You didn't go yet?
Why not?
Baba, beg.
But then I went to church, I came back.
Which church you go to?
Um, Christian Commitee Reform.
Sheena Umar dragged you?
Oh, no.
Where is that? On the, on the head of him. Is he in Waterloo?
Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
Is it on Weebah?
No, no, no. Sorry, I had to catch now.
Hey, you keep now, keep now, okay.
Well, yeah, that was pretty much just cooked then.
How was the vibe in church?
It was holy.
That was the best thing to see.
That's the best, that's the best. How about yours, Oscar?
Yeah, man, it was, it was good, it was good. Um, thank for me, celebrations started since Friday.
Okay.
Yeah, so had a couple of things on Friday. So like, Friday started suddenly, you know, spark with like different things, right? But yeah, I think today was, yeah, we're just outing them, literally just coming back from a good time and all.
Actually, do me, you know, like, so back in Nigeria, I'm Catholic, so they used to do the Passion of Christ.
Yeah.
At different station. I remember one time I was acting as one of these soldiers, man.
Are you serious?
I'm dead serious. Baba, did you, you flogged Jesus?
Do you notice that every Easter, those like picture or videos always come out where like they are flogging Jesus?
Passion of Christ, see, Passion of Christ is Easter's video.
Baba, be the guy. I remember, I can't, I think this was, maybe I was in, maybe SS3 or SS3.
Wait, wait, sorry, is it like real, real beating or it's just like soft touch?
No, it was soft touch now. It was soft touch, but we're beating the, we're beating the, um, listen, we're beating the cross. Because the guy had carried the cross. So you have to carry the cross and then, like, you have to walk for like, let's say like two key, like two kilometers. Because we were literally like, yeah. A lot more fun times, man. Like, that's life. But yeah, I hope that you guys are having and enjoying your Easter. Uh, don't forget to like and subscribe to the channel. We have so many ones I've been talking about. Listen, uh, for those of us that go to Walmart, Walmart, um, I said, it starts, so I checked and then it was more like a rumor, you understand? With regards to the self-checkout charges. So there was actually like this rumor that got floated last week that Walmart was going to begin, like, was going to begin to charge people for self-checkout, ninety-eight dollars to be precise. I was like.
Wait, wait, per year?
Yeah, 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 per year. So like, membership thing, self-checkout, you understand? So it was to combat theft.
Oh.
So they noticed that most people that do self, like, like, a very, very large amount of theft happens through self-checkout. But it is always somebody there, like, no, that's fine. How many people did you want to?
Because when you buy so many things.
What kind of like, because you know, honestly, back of my mind, I just feel like those things, like, if I pay without, if I, if I don't pay and I cross that thing, it's gonna beep.
Don't try it, child.
Like, I did get, but I said, at the back of my head, I'm always like, this is gonna beep. Except from like banana, I'm like, I'm pretty sure this banana is okay too.
I think most people.
I feel like most products.
Yeah. When they're like checking, they just.
Move one or two. So, so like, it's not like.
No, not everything is sad now.
Yeah.
But yeah, we come to that, we come to that. Ontario School Board is suing Facebook, Instagram, Snapchat. They're saying that, uh, these, these social media platforms are causing issues for their students. Mayor Chow, Mayor Chow, Mayor Chow. So for those that don't know who Mayor Chow is, Mayor Chow is the mayor of Toronto. So all of a sudden, they are trying to start billing, to start billing people for rent.
That's so dumb, like.
You understand? And then, of course, talking about social life, talking about relationship, getting a girl's number or social media handle, which one do you guys go for? And something, you know, we're going to talk about that. Something mysterious happened on, I think it was Friday or Thursday. So I was like on Tinder, I was just, just swiping through, swiping through. Then all of a sudden, I just see this post by Uma, by somebody, and then let me see if I can find it. No, no, like a profile.
Okay.
And then she goes happily married, but looking for extra phone with his permission, of course.
Are you being serious?
I'm dead serious. I swear to God, I'm not gonna show you this. I swear to God, yeah. Check, check the kilometer. You should see like how far it is. Is, is that, is, like, it's definitely gonna be close to this place.
Hmm, I wanna see.
So.
Happily married.
So the question is, the question for me is, how can he be happily married? Quote or no quote?
I wish that it was this one.
No, but, no, 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 no.
She's happily married.
Eh?
To her, she is.
But she's looking for extra, extra sauce.
So you mean, like, so like. Yeah, so, cause like, you know.
And again, so like, there's so much to this. She says happily married, but searching for extra phone with his permission. So first of all, most, I don't think, madam, whoever it is that you are, I don't think you're happily married. I'm sorry that you might think I should not be able to define.
That's not a marriage.
You might think I should not, I should not define what happiness is for you.
It's an open marriage, you know?
Who knows whether she's affording the guy the same privilege though?
He has a lot of questions, yeah.
A lot of questions. There with his permission, it's out with his permission. He should have done it by his side. He's like, oh, yeah, you know, Jeremy, you know, like, I'm not, we need to spice up the relationship, you know?
Maybe all are involved in it at the same time.
It could be so, hmm, that could be like a threesome kind of vibe that they're looking for.
No, the word is crazy.
Or the guy wants somebody to come up and be piping his wife in front of him. I've heard about it, you know? Ah, this guy. Well, we'll get there, we'll get there. Let's start with the, let's start with the first thing. Let's start with the first gist, man. Let's start with the first gist. Uh, so this is from Reuters. So Reuters decided to fact-check and said Walmart is not charging customers for ninety-eight dollars to use self-checkout. Uh, a Walmart spokesperson said that while self-checkout lanes may be at times be designated to customers who have signed up for its paid membership schemes, they are not exclusively reserved for these paying members as suggested by social media posts. A Facebook video says in part, Walmart is charging ninety-eight dollars to people to use, uh, self-checkout. A spokesperson for Walmart said, whether a store decides to limit access to its self-checkout stations for Walmart customers is a localization decision, or is a localized decision that the store manager would make depending on the, on customer traffic. So first of all, most, do you guys use self-checkout all of the time?
Uh, so in the beginning, I wasn't sure how to use it. So I, I didn't really, I didn't really wanna first, like, you know, kind of thing, like, you're new to the country, they say you go and pay this thing by yourself, like, eh. I actually used to pay this thing also. When I got there, like, how to scan it, you know, like, I was just new, like, like, you know, I just prefer, please, just, just do this thing. I'm letting you know that, yeah, like, I'm doing the right thing, right?
Do you miss that, do you miss that human interaction?
Yeah, sometimes, like, that's why you just.
Or sometimes you're like, no, I just want to do this and just get out of here.
So no, so now, like, right now, that I've gotten used to the system, it's just faster. They get, and it's just that speed, okay, yeah. Like, sometimes I'm holding like two, three things, so me waiting in the long queue, like, for, like, just, you know, I just, I just go there, there are a lot of self-checkout, just do, do your thing and you're gone, right? So I think like a city ease now for the whole self-checkout thing, so.
Yeah.
But if, like, if it's, if it's, I mean, honestly, I think it's still very, very much valid. But the idea of people stealing though, like, it's free.
People steal.
Like, pretty new, do you get what I'm saying?
People move.
But I feel, I feel with this thing, it's going to be more.
Yes, because, okay, so I'm just using my brain here. I pick, I pick like hundred things into my cards. I get the self-checkout. I scan, I scan, I scan, I scan, I scan. I put one. Scan, I scan, I scan, I scan, put another one, scan, I scan, I scan, put another one. Maybe everything is supposed to come out to like three hundred dollars. I end up paying two hundred dollars. I put everything in my bag and then I go. That's why you notice that at most Walmart, you know, stores, you see some people still asking you, like, oh, let's see your receipt.
Yeah, let's see your receipt, yeah, yeah.
Let's see your receipt. Because I'll be honest with you, like, the theft there, like, let me, let me, like, it's actually crazy. Even in, even in, like, I believe that even in the city here, that is actually going to be crazy. Let me see Walmart, uh, thefts, figures. Oh shit. So over, the most popular Walmart theft statistics, over three billion dollars worth of product are stolen from Walmart every year. Three billion.
That's a lot.
My guy.
You know, that, I was gonna say, does it affect the bottom line? But three billion is, a billion is a lot.
So, uh, what is the most stolen item at Walmart? Never. So it says cosmetics, lipstick, lip gloss, small electronics such as watches, toys, food, packaged meats.
Lipstick, lip gloss, that's so direct.
Pregnancy test.
Are you for real? For real, is there?
I'm dead serious. Who is stealing pregnancy, uh, missing?
You don't go do one or two things. You're like, oh my god, I don't have.
God, ah, no, 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 no.
Gondol?
Imagine they caught you stealing Gondol.
Bro. I hope one day. What the?
So yeah, like, um, apparel and accessories such as underwear, shoes, hats, handbags, yeah, sunglasses, like, those are like the most. No, but I'm, I'm much very aware that people steal from Walmart.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, no, I, I know.
The first day I went to Walmart, like, how, like, the self, self-checkout, like, nobody, I think that the normal was when they, people were just doing their thing and everything was just going, obviously, come on.
You know now, people will move, like, direct, like, direct. Me, I am not, yes, like, I'm a fan of self-checkout, but sometimes I just find, right, I miss that human interaction. You understand? But don't get me wrong, because sometimes I just want to scam my thing and it'll go, like, as soon as possible.
But when you see human interaction, like, do, most time when I want to like check, like, the person is just.
You're not even talking to that person, are you? Oh, yeah, it's fifty dollars.
They just move, just tell you.
Okay.
Catch you, bam, just go, they don't want to even like.
I get that, I get that. But the question now is, I think very soon, we'll never have anybody in those stores anymore. God, literally, what, what are those guys doing?
They'll move the stone. They'll move the stone.
No, no, but like, when, when, when you actually look at it, like, what are those guys doing? The only things they're doing is just refill the, like, the counters and then maybe like clean the place. Very soon, you have machine doing those kind of things, you understand? Like, already ready, like, self-checking out automatically, boom, like, it's.
But then, like, because of this thing now, I feel like every, like, if someone is checking out from this place, like, someone should be there to, like, actually be looking at, okay, the person, most time they just have one person there. And someone will call the person, oh, please can help me, and.
Yeah, that's really.
Yeah, people is just moving.
Yeah, that's, that means if you have like ten self-checkout stations, you know, like ten people.
Then people like at least watching.
So that's, that's, that's.
Then just go back to. Then just go back to Kinni now.
It can't, it can't, it can't be avoided then, like.
So now, then the thing is, I mean, to come back, they said you wanna put in, like, a membership, ninety-eight dollars here or something, right?
Yeah, no, 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 so like, that one was, like, it was just, like, like, it was just a video that just went viral. But Walmart actually has a membership kind of fee, you understand? Whatever it is that that membership comes with right now, I don't exactly know. But they have a membership kind of thing. And then they've been trying to float some other things, like Walmart credit card, that, you know, those guys would be asking. Baba, there's no way I'm getting Walmart credit card for anything. Like, it's not possible.
I'm sorry.
The thing is that we didn't grow with credit cards. So the fact I already have one in love for me is too much.
No, like, of course, I understand the concept of credits, but the idea of Walmart trying to give me, because I know some people that have like twelve credit cards.
I mean, so I know there's a way to hack credit card deals, right? I think I've seen like a couple of videos about it. But you have to have enough, you have to look at it like you're using it and using the benefits of it while you're returning back the money.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, so you know, there's cash back, there's this, there's travel, A B C, so some of what is kind of like.
All those M's, all those things.
Yeah, that you can use, but like, yeah, you, you're more or less hacking what the benefits are per series. There's a lot, I mean, you kind of really have to like understand like the entire system and know how to use it, right? But I mean, I mean, you just give me one, I feel like.
Yeah, one is good.
Maybe like, if you're traveling a lot, then you can get like all those benefits, like all those like, um, expedite, I don't know, not expedite, I forgot what it called, um, I think it's express, right? Like, express card and everything, you know, get like some more rewards and stuff that, you know, applies.
I think one of the best cards is American Express. Like, I've actually heard a lot about it, and some people do have it. But yeah, man, three billion in theft is actually a lot. Like, by the time you guys, it's a lot, but three billion.
Three billion is a lot though.
Three billion, that's some people's market capitalization.
Walmart is still making money even despite the theft, so.
Yeah, of course now.
That's still a lot.
But I believe that they would, they would be dedicating some resources to actually reduce that, or to combat the theft happening, like, three billions is a lot. Do you know what they can do with three billion?
How much do they make?
I know. They, they, they should be making around, most likely, times ten.
Oh, no.
Of that yearly, times ten, or even times, times, times twenty, self. Well, yeah, man, which Walmart.
I have a question though. What happened to the idea of, like, you passing a scanner and that thing beeping? Like, is that it doesn't work?
No, it works, but that item has to be tagged.
So if Walmart tags all their items.
So like, an item, like, an item, like, let's see, let's see, let's see, let's see.
Bag of rice, what happened?
You're going to go scot-free.
I think that beeping thing happens when, like, if you're meant to come outside.
No, 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 it also happens if, so for some reason, it also happens if some of the items you move have not been scanned. You understand? But the question is, how is it done properly? So I remember, me and somebody went to buy something at Spotcheck right now, and then we got there and she had paid. But then the lady at the counter forgot to remove the tag. We were about to go out, I didn't say I'm making notes, I'm making notes. So we're like, oh, we had paid, you know? So what will go back over now? She now checked the, she now, oh, that isn't it.
They didn't remove the tag, yeah, yeah.
I was like, you have to take it back to them, because there's no way you're going to remove it. I said, I want to break it.
I didn't even break it, I think you damaged your clothes in it, yeah.
So she took it back to them next day and then, you know, they removed it for her. So like, those kind of things, Walmart generally have like a couple of tags on some of their products that you can, they either have remove it by themselves, usually like plastic tags or like that. Or I think some of those tags, there's a way that those scanners know that, okay, these items have been scanned, you understand? If they have not been scanned, then of course the doors will begin to make noise and that thing is embarrassing. Going to Walmart and trying to exit and those things make everybody looking like. And sometimes, even you, you are, you are surprised because you now, you now open your bag.
I actually look at what's, what's happening here.
I've seen this many times, even at Walmart, like homeless people come inside and then they want to move things. You've not, you, you've not seen, ah, no, I've seen this so many times. You see those guys at the door dragging bags with homeless person. In fact, they even change the person's safe. They change the person outside. They're dragging the bag, dragging the bag, even the homeless person that is moving the thing is still.
Like, it's right.
It's crazy, man. It's crazy. Ontario School Board suing Facebook, Instagram, Snapchat and TikTok for four billion dollars. You guys should see yours more money. I don't understand. Uh, so this is according to National Post. So lawsuit claims the platforms are negligently designed for compulsive use and have rewired the way children think and behave and learn. So, uh, Toronto, so four of Ontario's largest school boards are suing the parent companies of Facebook, Instagram, Snapchat and TikTok, alleging these social media platforms are disrupting student learning. The Toronto District School Board, the P O District School Board, the Toronto Catholic District School Board and the Ottawa Carlton District School Board filed four separate but similar cases in Ontario Supreme Court of Justice on Wednesday. The lawsuit claims the platform are negligently designed for compulsive use and have rewired the way children think, behave and learn, and leaving teachers and schools to manage the fallout. They claim students are experiencing an attention, learning and mental health crisis because of prolific and compulsive use of social media products. Please. What nonsense is this?
Yeah, I just, the off, like, I'm just.
Don't get me wrong, go.
No, no, like.
Listen, the truth is truth.
It's from home.
Yeah, like, it's true though.
No, it's true, but like, I mean.
The effect and the impact of, bro.
It's bad.
Bro, especially that TikTok one.
We grew up in, we didn't.
No, we did not grow up with Reels.
We didn't grow up with Reels, but we grew up with, with Facebook, MySpace.
Facebook, no, me, I'd not use MySpace. Did you use MySpace?
No, I didn't use MySpace.
Of course.
I was there.
If you lose MySpace, then I would say Oscar, you should be forty or forty-eight. But honestly, like, we did not use MySpace. Like, what we use were things like Facebook.
It was High Five. High Five before Facebook.
I'd know, I'd know we used High Five.
It is High Five, I remember High Five a lot, it was great.
I never used to go. When I tell people I never used to go, they always look at me.
Yeah, when you told me, I was like, how?
Yes, I did not used to go because, like, he never, like, got to me like that. WhatsApp, stay commenting, Facebook, stay commenting. And again, what, what were you even doing on Facebook? You're, you're just sharing picture or even like writing a couple of things, like, you're not, you're not doing a lot.
The internet was not even that fast.
It was not even that fast.
Yeah, because that day you wait to load, you be like, you should be waiting for the post.
Then you'll be seeing your network changed to three G, changed to three G edge. Sometimes you will see G S F.
Bruh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like, it's actually, like, it's actually crazy though, like, where we are right now. My phone is always on five G and stuff.
BlackBerry pingin'. I think that, that was a rhythm.
No, no, that was it. That was, that was the step.
That was, that was the step of.
That one, that one moved to the next, you know, like, it moved to, like, by then you look at the evolution of social media, you understand? And, you know, coming from, of course, like you said, the area of MySpace to Facebook, I was even still reading. So I was listening to Peter Thiel, and Peter Thiel was talking about, um, like, Zuckerberg believing that Facebook was the first social network. But if you ask somebody like, no, as like, as like the main, like, the one that took off, basically. But if you ask someone like, um, Reid Hoffman, so Reid Hoffman is the founder of LinkedIn. Like, if you ask someone like Reid Hoffman, Reid Hoffman will tell you that, like, he had done one in nineteen ninety-seven. But that one, like, was using avatars, like cat and dog and stuff like that. But like, the point I'm trying to make is that, if you look at the evolution of all of these things and where they are right now. Now there's, please, what are you suing Snapchat for? What are you doing, son?
It is that there's, there's a problem and I'm not sure how to address it.
How are they going to, but, well, you cannot be suing the parent company for, like, for these things though.
But like, who, who owns the product then?
Yeah, of course, the company is on the product.
So who do you now hold responsible?
They're not forcing you to like, you know, do this thing.
Nobody's putting a gun to your student's head or your child's head and say, oh, you must be on TikTok.
Yeah, I feel like they even directed more to like the parents still, because, you know, like, yeah.
Put like that level of control.
Yeah, instead of like, because.
That is actually true though. I feel like parents can, because.
To an extent.
Because social media is not just additive to them, it's just that they're in their formative years. They're learning how to learn. And if they're learning how to learn through short learning.
Yes.
Then there might be a problem on the long ground.
I keep saying it.
If all of these things. Because then back in the days, we had to sit down and read a book, long, long text.
Do you know how crazy this is, Oscar?
Dude, that's like taking on assignments, right?
Do you know how bad this is?
Who goes to go, um, easy goes to school, and you have to read it, you have to summarize it, you have to bring it back. You get like, there was no, you literally had to go through the text, you have to.
Let me bring the picture of how bad this thing is for you. Imagine we adults, we went through the process of reading long-form text, long-form text, writing long-form text, listening to long-form text. Now, bro, sometimes I might be going through YouTube reels. The video is just five seconds in and I don't have interest and then I skip it fast. Although my brain has been wired with thousands of hours of, you know, like, of long-form content. Now imagine somebody whose brain has not been wired with, like, long-form content at all, and they're just exposed to this almost immediately. What do you expect? Like, I think somebody was saying that the average, and I hear it then, so they're planning on banning TikTok in the States at all. And then the, the engagement on TikTok is actually very, very long. I think it is, it is used by a hundred million users in the States. And then the engagement is actually ninety minutes. Ninety minutes.
One, one minute.
One hour, one hour, thirty minutes.
Ninety minutes?
Yes.
Like, one person spends.
As like, as like the average.
Okay.
Yes. Is it, bro, that's long. And the truth of matter is that those things, according to people that have thrown me and people that use them, you could spend two hours.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're just.
Very addictive, very, very, very addictive.
And you're watching thousands of content, like, just.
Very, very.
So for these school board people, I understand their pain because these teachers get to school, they're trying to impart knowledge into these students. And at the end of the day, it's almost as if it's not going anywhere.
Yeah.
But I don't think that, this is where, you know, forums like PTAs, Parenting Chas, Parenting Chas Associations, those who like. But the truth of matter is this, social media is here to stay. You're not going to do anything about it. So it not depends on the parental control that you're going to exact.
If you're like, but can, can, I don't know how school is here, but like, you go to, you go to school, your phone.
So them.
There is like, can they block it?
Like, block I D's going.
Doing school.
But how about when the kids are home though? How about when the kids are home?
Or go outside or something.
I honestly do think that this, this boils down to the parents. Okay, like, I honestly do believe, see, for me, yeah, my child, regardless of, maybe like when I have my child, you know, under five, six, seven years, I would honestly not allow them have a phone until they are fifteen. I don't care about what any other person thinks.
I would like to know.
But it's a phone and then there's a medium of communication, you get what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Because at some point, like, I feel the major benefit of a cell phone is communication.
No, but, yeah, that is the primary.
Yeah, that's the primary. So I understand if you say, yeah, I understand if you say you step down the quality of your phone to be something more.
To what?
Like Nokia ninety-five, N-series kind of thing.
Bro, where will you buy, where will you buy N-series now?
There's a selling, there's a selling.
Where?
Go back my journal. But no, no, I think, I think there's a selling.
I honestly, no, no, but I honestly would not want my kids to actually own.
But that was still, that doesn't stop anything, you know?
No, it does. It does.
So I feel like, they feel like it's not to end, but to control. Like, because I know I was listening to this guy, um, Peter Thiel, not, this is Peter Thiel, the entertainment guy, and he was, I was watching his, yeah, his script and everything. And there's something, you know, quite, yeah, I said it before, but like, he, he lets them have their playtime, but is restricted and it makes them, make them work for it.
Yeah, like, yeah, so you have to read, to get over, you have to read twenty pages, you have to read X amount of books, you have to do this. And that's good though.
To get, so it's not like you're taking away that fun time, but you're bringing in discipline at a very young age. Where they understand, okay, fine, I can delete gratification.
Yeah.
And then do certain work and then, oh, you've read this book, tell me about it, why did you tell me about it? I think my dad tried to do for me when I was younger, probably did, right? And he's like, okay, read this book and tell me about it when you're done. I'm going through his lazy lead.
My dad, you get what I'm like. I always remember one.
Right, but it wasn't always consistent, you get what I'm saying?
Like, I remember back then it was pounced. I can never forget that thing, pounced. So like, I was reading a book about a lion trying to like jump on like.
Oh, yes, yes.
So my dad was not asking me, what, we know pounced. Baba, you don't know. So I was like, I don't know. He said, pounced, like, what does it, like, what does this sound like? A lion pounced on. I had to not know. He said, but you read the book, so you just read through, like. Man, fun time. But honestly, like, I don't know what those, I don't know what the parents hope to achieve by suing this. Like, okay, so let's assume, okay, you now sue these guys. What do you want them to do? They should restrict it based on age or.
Yeah, so I feel, the, the thing is not taking it away from them completely because that builds up suspense and that builds up like a more deserved for it, right? I feel like now more than ever, like, we as parents or parents-to-be or young parents need to be very active, very conscious about making sure that kids are not too addicted to certain things that will not benefit them. need to be very active, very conscious about making sure that kids are not too addicted to certain things that will not benefit them.
But how do you, how do you, how do you ensure that?
They, you have to be tech savvy, you need to understand how to regulate the time screen, you need to understand how to create discipline.
But then that's the thing, parents are busy, man. Parents are, parents are busy, like, like, some parents are busy at work. You understand, like, you cannot just remove that, you know, from them. They're busy at work, they're trying to put food on your table. Like, I know, I remember like back then growing up, some, some families, their mom and dad are usually out of the house. Like, they are coming back at night. So, bro, whatever it is they are kids, I'm supposed to. Back then it was better, you know, this one now is.
There was no light, first of all.
No, 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 back then it was better because it had to be like physical.
Yeah, physical.
But right now, you jump online, bro.
And do a lot of things.
You are seeing things.
Yeah, that, that's like, see, they, they have to be parental controls, you have to self, um, filter the internet access.
Put safeguards.
Put safeguards, like, you cannot just be ignorant, because you know, you know, like, even you as, as grown men, like, people are adults, you know what they're struggling through. So how much more when, you have to be sure that they're watching Cartoon Network, it is Cartoon Network they're watching, that's it. The young one, you haven't know.
Do a lot of things.
A lot of things in them.
And I'm like, I don't understand.
Even the cartoons are not even safe.
That you see a guy and the guy kissing in cartoon. Like, for real, it happens, like, it's just crazy.
I just see, I just feel like parenting now is more, you have to be more active. More, way more.
Yeah, you, you, you have to be more present.
Way more present, way more cautious, way more.
Longer like before.
Yeah, you can just let things go.
And I think right now globalization is aligning, you know, so you, you know, you say back then, back then it takes a village to raise a child. Right now, I don't know, the village is being so scanty that, yeah, 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 because like everybody is on their own kind of thing, like it's very difficult for like even another family to know what is even going on in the family, for them to, to, and again, like, yeah, like.
Bring advice and to jet.
I say, oh, don't go there, oh, don't do this. And the true matter is this, yeah. These mobile phones, these social media networks are actually depriving these children of socialization. Back then, as a kid, I swear to God, growing up from like, um. Let's see. Exactly.
When you go out to play.
You're going out, wet, playing ball. Your screening form is. Imagine being a seven-year-old right now.
You're jumping through the swing, you're falling on the sand, you're just rolling, and then your mom pick you up like, who's going to wash your clothes?
No, 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 they're not even picking you up, they're waiting for you to came, because you're not supposed to go and play that ball. You're not supposed to go and play that ball.
Bro, literally.
But like, so, so now these kids are inside, they are inside, and they are pressing phone, they are, they are like, they're scrolling through. They are on, you know, on, on the tablets, like, just swiping through. Or back then, man, like in primary school, I used to be so, so excited for break time because I'm going to play football. You understand? Right now, imagine the kid of an eleven year, like, like the mind of an eleven-year-old kid. The guy is thinking about the video on TikTok that he has to watch, I like dead, like, like, everything is upside down. Kids no longer go out, kings, kids no longer go to the park to go and like have fun, kids no longer meet each other and play and, you know. Be kids. Everybody is just on their headphones, on TikTok, making, watching. Nah, it's, it's actually sad, though. Being a parent in this time is actually, I think it's actually quite difficult.
Yeah, the hardest thing.
It's difficult.
Yeah.
It's difficult, because these things are, these things are stopping, because, bro, I don't know. I, I think I will even ask my mom that which one would she prefer, me to be on a mobile phone and just be wasting away my time, not knowing what I'm watching, or me to go outside? Because that is socialization, that is living. You just go out, you walk, you walk around the street without aim. You're coming back by seven thirty.
I remember when, when we were younger, sometimes, what my daddy used to do is hilarious, you come back. And obviously, when he comes back, everybody's doing something, you just go and touch the TV. You don't touch the TV, and it's like, ah, you've got scabs.
Ah, because carry book, like, you know, we are dealing as a man.
Baba, you don't carry. What are you not see?
Play this part.
You just, you just enter the kitchen, ah, the place are not washed.
Oh, God.
No, 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 but, 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 but I don't know how our brains never used to think about that thing that the TV would be heating. Because, okay, fine, you hear pimp, 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 you go and then you just turn it off. Regardless of how long it is, the TV will still be heating, like, it will still be warm. So anybody would know, or the worst one used to be back then, rather those V C Ds and all those DVDs.
You know.
And then never take light. You never take light.
You don't bring it out.
Yeah, you can't bring it out. The worst one is, you know, those, those players that had the cassette. So sometimes I just used to, so like, maybe all of us start seeing a movie. Start seeing it, then of course it's time to go to bed, go to bed. I come, and I come back from school the next day, and then the movie is still, is there, I'm like, feeling tempted to watch it. So now, the thing about that thing is that there is no rewind. There was no rewind back then.
No, you have to bring it up and turn the thing.
Like, you don't get what I'm saying. Once you start watching it, like, it's going to the front, so you have to bring it back and rewind it. So now, if you start watching it, and then it pan out, it's like, so it stops at that place.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
First of all, you have to go on the gen, that if you have gen, and then you know how to bring it out and do all of those nanigans and all, like, it was just so, but like, then was fun. Like, you go to like the um local video store in your, in your area, go and rent, rent video tapes. That was, that was fun, bro. Right now, oh, it's out on Netflix, Pam. Man, civilization sometimes, man, like.
Takes away the fun.
I think we'll adapt. It's just, it's just us that like.
No, we definitely adapt though, boy.
You're comparing the times, you're like.
More harm.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To do more harm.
Just have to like change.
Yes, rain tax, rain tax, people in Toronto could end up paying for the rain that falls on their property.
I have a question. I can't finish, like, I think you can hear it.
Uh, seriously, they want to tax the rain, tweeted M P Kevin Vonk. Because people in Toronto aren't already struggling enough to make ends meet. Oliver Chow wants to implement a rain tax. Uh, Toronto is considering a change in the way it charges homeowners and businesses for waters, for water. The new charge is referred to as a stormwater charge. Although many on social media are already calling it a rain tax, since it has to do with stormwater runoff. They plan this back to twenty twenty-one during the mayorship of John Tory, of course, remember John Tory, our guy. Although an earlier proposal goes back uh to twenty seventeen. Still, its recent visibility has many pointing their fingers at the current mayor, Oliver, uh, Oliver Chow. So this is from National Post, and it has drawn mocking condemnation at home and abroad. Of course, Trump had to chime in on this. So basically, um, let me see, let me see, let me see. So I'll just talk about what they want to do. So they are basically going to charge you on. The, 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 let me see. Okay, so they're currently being charged this. Okay, so the new charge will be based on how much hard surface exists on the property. Roof, driveway, concrete, landscaping are all hard surfaces. We do not absorb water. So.
Like, I'm just so.
Why are you looking at me?
I'm just so confused.
So that's how it's going to work. So your square foot of your place.
So if there's no soil, you pay.
Exactly. So like, your driveway, like, this is, like, like you say, yeah, driveway, concrete. So if you, if you own, like.
So I have a question.
What?
What's purpose?
Of what? What's the purpose of, of, of tax before?
No. Taxing from personal income to the government, you said that the government can do certain things.
No, no, but that was, that was, that was actually not, that's actually not the purpose of tax, though.
Or income tax?
Of tax is usually like a way for the, okay, so, when, when you start talking about money, it's really very, very, very crazy. So the purpose of printing money is to service debt. We know. It's to service debt. Now, the only way you can pay back that, that debt is tax. Like, that's literally how you actually pay back. So of course, like, because the government prints the money, disperses it.
But this was.
Build this industry, you know, like all those things.
But this is at the point of when the central bank came in and they had to.
Yeah, you know, yeah, yeah, like all of that. But then the true matter now is that where you're now trying to tax things like rain, like falling.
No, the question is not like, I'm not even getting to the, to the real purpose. Okay, because like, cause I understand, I understand like carbon tax, it's, it's like.
No, but I don't understand carbon tax.
So I think carbon taxes, like, if the business you're doing is emitting more carbon, to get a point, it's kind of like a cautionary task.
So it means that you're going to be charging me for driving a car.
Sort of. No, right now, cars are like the primary point, means of transportation.
At some point, you'll be charging everyone who has a car.
It's possible, because of that, it's possible, to get, but now that is like based on industry, like carbon tax type means based on like heavy heaters.
No, but Oscar, let's just juxtapose it. Right now, you're charging, you're charging.
I'm trying to say like.
You don't start charging me for rain, that have no influence on.
No, the question, no, 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 no.
Tomorrow you will charge me and say, you know what, this car that you bought. You're giving me air tax.
Yes.
No, no, no. So carbon tax, like, I understand carbon tax on industries, like heavy heaters, like people producing a lot of C O two, as a way, as a cautionary tale. To get for them to reduce their carbon emission, right? So the goal of the tax is if, is because, is a consequential thing of what you're doing, right? What I don't understand is the rain tax, or rather the rain thing not being absorbed by the ground, right? Okay, it's running off.
Oh, so, yeah, yeah, so like, so like, the reason is, yeah, the reason, the reason is actually here. So the reason is, so why does the city want to do this? The city says it would provide dedicated funding for a dedicated service. Stormwater charge for stormwater management, linking properties that create more runoff to the cost of dealing with it, that would in turn help raise awareness of stormwater management. So because of, you know.
I don't think I've seen any flooding.
Yeah, exactly, like, you know.
Do you get what I'm like, no, honest, like, I feel like.
No, some of these, see, some of these taxes.
Some of this, so what exactly? It's pretty good, but they're talking about what it costs to maintain that, to maintain that sewage system.
So all the tax we have been paying.
Is not enough to.
And, and how they have been doing it.
This is what I said, you understand, you understand carbon tax.
So my question is, my question is, my question is like, see, there are so many, there are so many things. Emits carbon tax the most, like, actually emits carbon.
I mean, that's where most of the manufacturing thing is.
Do they pay carbon tax there?
I don't know. But I don't, but I know if they charge, if they are charging, if they are charging Apple, if they are charging Apple carbon tax, right? It's because Apple's manufacturing firm is in China and producing all of that, right?
Exactly.
Indirectly, they're, they're paying for it.
Who is charging who?
I don't know, I don't know who charges.
No, 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 but you just said if you're charging Apple carbon tax.
So I'm saying like, obviously, it's with the United States government, because Apple is very registered here. Is it, doesn't make sense?
Like, like, all of these laws does not make any sense. Because I'm sure that, I'm sure that Canada does not emit half as, half of what China is emitting.
Even quarter.
Exactly.
So we're not being charged carbon tax, eh? We're not being charged carbon tax.
Are you sure? No, because, that, no, no, that, that.
It's for, it's for companies. That's for, I feel, I might be wrong, you know, I stand corrected, but I feel it's for companies who actually emit
Carbon tax.
In their process.
In Canada.
So manufacturing, shipping, like all those, like I said, heavy heaters, right? But what I just don't understand is with, with the rain taxes, like, it affects everyone, like, it's water, do you get what I'm saying? Water is not causing flood, it's not doing anything, like, it's.
It's just nature, like.
Also, what's, what's percentage as well?
Of what?
The carbon, the water.
Oh, the, the, the increase.
Yeah.
I don't think it's much. So like, um, so currently, currently in Toronto, businesses, you know, are charged uh, the rate of four dollars fifty-one cents for every cubic meter. You understand, of the first five thousand cubic meters, that's of water. But currently, they are going to hike it up a little bit, it's going to go to, so they said the city estimates that the water rate would fall by twenty-five, will fall by twenty-five percent. As three eighty-five million dollars in, in stormwater funds were removed from the current tax. So it's actually, it's actually just going to go up by a very, very little percentage. Like, it's not high, but the question is, you're just giving every chance.
So now it's a little, it's kind of like a slippery slope.
Yes, now.
Yeah, cause like.
They're going to soon start attacking car owners.
I might not be wrong, I might be wrong, but my question still was today, like, what exactly is this water doing? Is it, is it causing flood? Is it causing damage?
It's not causing flood, but they're trying to say that, they're trying to say that the cost.
To maintain.
Maintain what? Isn't it like there's a hole, it goes in, it flows out.
The cost, the cost to maintain, the cost to maintain that pipe.
Everything goes fine, like, it's not, it's not.
The cost to maintain that pipe, the cost to maintain the person that's going to service that pipe.
Exactly are they maintaining exactly?
No, like, at some point, you ask yourself, like. No, we, we need to, that's it, I don't know, man.
It's crazy, it's crazy.
No, but it's actually, it's actually very, very ridiculous, it's actually very, very ridiculous. Like, they're just saying things like in Toronto, like, like I told you guys now, like.
Too much now.
Even, I've never even paid that money, and I hope that they don't, they don't increase by a hundred percent. So I was driving. I was driving, I was driving forty-eight in a thirty, eh, kilometer, you know. And more. Next thing, I just saw after two weeks, they just sent you a letter, boom.
Oh, they didn't even stop you in the road, so they let you go.
One hundred and ten dollars, one hundred and ten dollars bill.
Crazy.
They wrote you there, you are going forty-eight at thirty.
So it was a school district then?
No, it wasn't a school district, like it was a, you, like, like it was a residence, like it was a home place, like. And again, like, it wasn't like I was, like, just boom, like I was just, I, I don't know, maybe I was all overjoyed, I was just imagining, imagining it.
A hundred and ten.
Bro.
That's, that's, that's a lot.
It's crazy, it's crazy, man, like, I.
So what do you do sixty?
No, you know, you know, like, here, like, over, over speeding, like the artist sees your license.
Funny enough, this thing you just said, someone in church today, I met, said that, like, they actually took his car for like two weeks.
Yeah, do I, do I, do I just see your license on your car?
License on your car.
They get to his house, and they give me your Mercedes.
Like, I don't know if they told it, but like, he said that for like two weeks here, he, he took his car, and they billed him like seventy or something dollars.
What, what did he do?
It was speeding.
It's over speeding now.
Like on a highway on the residential.
Yeah, I think, I think highway.
Is it highway or at home?
I think highway.
Because that highway one, no, but that, see, that highway one, yeah, is usually very, very tricky. Because if you are, like, except you're going one sixty.
But that's way too much, you know?
That one is dead. Except you're going one sixty, but if you're like going like hundred, one ten, like you're still good.
Yeah.
But some people, like, last week, we were, we were on the highway now, and then you saw some people, you know, vroom, 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 vroom. It's like, Baba, you have only one life, oh, you have only one life. And I, I know, when a car is accelerating very, very highly, it's lighter. So any contact with it, with another car, it's like, it's, like, it's crazy.
Yeah, true.
And people don't even reason that, like, any contact with another car, like, it spins off the road. Before you, you are getting the, this thing to, Baba.
You're gone. Until.
You don't go. You don't go.
I still, I should feel like, if it's highway, you know, charred like that, I feel like some of these things are necessary because they're cautionary. Because now everybody knows that there's some kind of consequences to your actions. You can find that psychologically makes people obey the law.
That still makes you a kind of sane.
Yeah, but because they know that, man, if you're doing like this zoom thing, somewhere will knock on your door, be like, oh, God, give me your keys.
No, no, even like, they won't, like, they won't stop you at the road. Like, you see O B P, they'll just follow you now. So many that you see, you just see some cars parked, yeah, bra, this was like three weeks ago, I was going to Toronto in the evening, and then like I was still within the city, that day, the, that day you, you also going to Toronto, and then I remember calling you and then you were like.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
I just saw police. I was on the highway, I just saw, I just saw police in front of me. So you know like those guys, like, like they have a scanner.
Yeah.
So they can scan uncoming cars. So anyone that picks, like you just see the police, they just come up from the road, boom. I swear, I thought, I thought it was me, oh. Until, and I saw that the guy was in front, because that kind of thing, you don't know, like you're just pressing it, pressing it, pressing it, and then you're just. And then I just saw the police guy go on the light like this, and that thing, once they on that light. Stop that car.
That's the tell you, bros, we are for you, we are coming for you.
You don't stop that car.
As you're going, your charges are increasing. You're running away from the police. Then you increase your speed, right, to run away.
Exactly.
And those cars are fast, oh.
Bruh, so most of them, when I see those, like whenever I see them like that, I just usually like bring down the speed. Like I, like I press the brake to bring down the speed, except I'm on the fast lane on the other side then. Where it's going. Yeah, be- before moving to the other stuff, let's talk about this, oh, we'll not really talk about it because of how crazy it is, but let's. Let's, let's dip our into this, this situation. Because it's actually not funny. And the reason why I say it's not funny is because I remember like myself and Siches were saying this a couple of episodes ago. That, and I, and I, and I think you were there, Oscar, that people look up to these celebrities a lot and model their lives towards them, you understand? Look at someone like Diddy that sang all of these hit songs and, you know, did all of this. And again, most of these things are still alleged, like they're not yet, you know, proven and like he's not, he's not been, uh, what did your league say? He's not being charged by, you know. Like, like all of this has still allegations on though, but. It's not looking good.
Yeah.
It's not looking good, man.
It's not looking good.
Even with the people around him, like, at this point, they're even calling him, they are calling him a human trafficker.
That's when I heard, I'm like, oh, okay.
To get to that point where they call you human trafficker, my guy.
She's getting crazy.
It's not good.
Here is no smoke without fire, so like, something is up.
I think we should wait, wait till they play out, like, I feel like there's still more.
And, and I think he's on the run though. Yeah, he's on the run, like they could not, so like his jet was in, was found in the island, like an Antigua or something. It's actually crazy, like, this is some insane shit. You guys should just be careful out there, man. You cannot be modeling your life with this people.
With human, that's crazy, though.
I just, I don't like, in the end, celebrities or not, like everybody's human, you know, there's the good side, there's, there's the mistakes in the past, the faults. You know, the idea is, is, sometimes like understand, like, everyone makes mistakes, you yourself have made mistakes, right? But obviously if it's something that is, should be consequential, then that requires some punishment, right? So sometimes, and I feel one issue that I have now, like what I mean now, I mean like this moment in time, this era in time. But the internet is a lot of misinformation.
Exactly, exactly.
Like, like, like you're just, at some point, like, what is true now? Like what is the real, so you don't want to believe everything that just comes off first, you want to be sure, okay, which one fits us out.
Everyone is spreading their own narrative.
Yeah, which one has that, so like you know, okay, for sure that this is, this is the real deal, right? Cause I mean, A I, chat G P T. Messages, like, I mean, I think it was, it started, it started heavy during that Trump era. But now it has, it has blown up to things where. I mean, I'm watching YouTube and I'm seeing some ads that I'm like, this right here is a scam. Because I saw the original version of the interview. Yes, it's so annoying, like it's literally they use voiceover and then they're saying, I'm like, no, I've seen this interview.
If you don't look at it well.
Yeah, you don't look at it well, like, I'm like, I, I keep reporting it on YouTube, like, man, this, this.
Are you report?
I know because it's annoying, because like, I know, I know the truth.
Ain't, ain't nobody gonna tell for that.
So like, like, and I'm like, and I'm like, if, like, I'm like, this, there's a problem, there's a problem, and, and, and it's.
It's a big problem.
It's, it's, it's annoying. So because of that, like, I'm always, I'm always calm, let, 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 like I said, let time play out. Let the right information come out. Cause I know right in this era, right now, this moment in time, it's just.
Yeah, 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 they're like, everybody's fast game information out there without even verifying the source, without even verifying the authenticity of what they're putting out there. And then people are just consuming it and just throwing it out there. You know, everybody's in search for likes, in search for views. Exactly, you know, like, and it begins to make you have that formal, like kind of missing out if you're not online. Because you're like, oh, like what, like, what next is going on, like with this person, like, like, like what are they up to and stuff? But yeah, say cheese, you see a fine girl outside.
Ah, the way he does things, say cheese, you see a fine girl outside.
Okay, say cheese.
Talk from your experience.
You see a girl that is not so fine outside, since you want us to do that now. But yeah, you see a fine girl outside, you are put her. Of course, you want to continue conversation post, you know, meeting her. What are you collecting? Social media or?
May I be honest, eh?
Social media or number?
Me, for me, social media first.
Why?
Because I always want to promote my business first.
Yeah, interesting.
Yeah, like, I want to see that, I want you to see that.
No, 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 okay, so you are, you are having the wrong person I'm asking this. I should not be asking you this. Like, I don't know why it's. You, you want to brag first. This guy is not serious. Most of all brag, like, you know what, I have, I have ten thousand, I have a red follow outs, so better know what you are doing first.
He should show you that, he should show you that.
By your legitimate.
I don't understand, someone you're interested in, that you just met.
Well, you only have one social media account, right? The one, sorry, one I G account, isn't it? So let me see, so even if it was for business or professional, it's still gonna be the same.
No, 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 I'm going off what you just said. He said he wants to promote his business. Are you promoting your business somewhere, somewhere you just met?
Ah, who I want to promote them to? Like, it's so, I'm meeting for the first time, hi, what's your name?
No, but why, like, like, aside from, like, is it just to promote the business or, like, there's some other reason?
Okay, I feel like, okay, I can also get to know.
That person?
Yeah, no, I could go to your, like, highlights.
See a couple of things.
Yeah, let me know, cause if I have your number, like, we're just talking, like, I don't, you know, from there I can even see, like, link things and see people that tag you. And you know.
And see mutual friends.
So I just want to tell you, you're tracking the person.
Yeah, let me, I want to know more about it.
I know stalking, because like the information, you, you put it out there already, so if, if you put a story, oh, I see it, you put it in a description, you know.
Cause like, I want to know, like, who do you know that I know, you know?
Honestly, I am more, I'm more a fan of, give me your number.
Why?
I don't want to know what you're doing.
You, 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 you know, I don't, I don't, I don't. You just want straight to the point, you know, need.
No, 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 that's not even the thing, you know, so maybe it would be like, give me, and again, don't get me wrong. Cause I honestly do think at this point where we are right now, social media is even more personal than number.
So for me, it's the opposite, and that's why I asked for, like, I prefer to go with the I G.
Number, I don't know, I, like, I honestly don't know anything about you. I don't know what you're doing. If you make a post, put a story, I don't know.
Dude, you, you don't know.
Like, like, I'm just saying with your number, but with your social media, if, if you give me your I G. And I send you a message and you are not predisposed to reply, but you can post something. I know that, I must start catching feelings that, oh, just posting this and he doesn't want to reply my message, like you get that kind of thing. But with phone number, it is, whenever I reply, I reply you, like, it's like that, like, that's honestly what I think though. That's why I think that social media is more, should be more private.
Feel, because social media is open to everyone, like even if you had not met her before. And you probably stumbled upon her story somewhere, you know, you could have just followed her, right? Or you could have just followed the page if you were just searching or something random, or you just follow up on the page, because I feel it's more open. To get like, there is, is not as personal as having your phone number, which is like your address. I feel like phone number is like your address, you have your contacts, your clothes, and for you, iPhone users agree, or your personal group chat and everything on that matter. For us, Android, WhatsApp. It, 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 it's very, very personal. I didn't, I can call you to hear your voice.
No, but how so? How so? Because if I block somebody now, if I block someone via my number, I've blocked them. Except they use a different number. But if I block someone on social media, they still know my handle, so they can use another account to now stalking me.
What, what, where are you, where are you guys at, like, your routine blocking?
We fought now.
Why?
No, 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 hypothetical dude, like I'm just saying, like.
Yeah, I feel you.
Like, if I don't want that person to, to have any privilege to whatever it is I'm doing.
Cause I, I hear you because there's one very strange thing that I heard as well. Yeah, so like, so. God, this is hilarious. But sorry, um, boy and girl going out. Boy, girl had issues, girl blocked boy. Boy could not reach out to girl, boy decides to reach out to the friend that are connected on I G, right? And could see the story, and oh, just like a way to like cautious, like, okay, no, if girl is okay, and everything is going okay. Girl got upset that boy was reviewing her friend's story and found it creepy to get to her. So in that case, she felt like. Don't view me, girl, girl should not view, should not try to get in contact with boy, boy should not get, try to get in contact with girl. And also in contact with her friends, to get in contact with her, and also view her friend's story.
To just make sure she was fine.
It's just to make sure she was fine.
Very problematic, babe.
No, it's not, I'm trying to say, I understand where, you know, where people now see I G as a more personal thing than number. Right? Cause I've heard, I've heard the story like that.
Because.
Because for me, the way I look at it is like, I just like, oh, chats, you don't respond, you don't respond, life goes on. Do you get, I know that there's no level of seriousness and commitment, like I don't have to remember, cause I hate when I scroll through my phone, I see content I can't remember. It's annoying, it annoys me. I'm like, okay, I'm not called you, I'm not sending you texts, I'm like.
I'm a very, very bad person.
Why am I, why you still here?
I can have some, like, if I just met somebody, I can have your number for you like a month. I will not save it.
You not save it? What? How?
No, no, it adds up to me a lot.
So how you not have the number?
Yeah, so you, you called the number. Like, I will not save it. I was like, okay, I know, okay, this person is.
Then you not save it.
No, 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 no. If, sort of like, when we stop talking, like I just know, I can, I cannot delete, like if I don't delete your number, I don't have detail everywhere, and then it's gone. You understand, like I can delete that whole thing. But if you save the person's number, one day you might be going to your tech, you're like, you're like a contact. Like, ah, I'm not even with this person in the world. And then you try to give person a call, it will translate into something like you don't even want to, like, and again, people. I don't know, for some reason, this time, and they, people pick offence with people actually caring for them. Like, oh, I've not heard from you, like, in a bit.
They get angry.
Some people take a pee, you understand, like some people take a pee and most, some people actually want to be left alone. Like, I'm in my lane, I'm fine.
Like left alone from everybody or from you?
It could be like from you.
Yeah, cause I know some people are more selective, like.
From everybody, cause you know that time I went to do the last podcast with this girl. There is, there is this girl, she knows that I know also, and like, I thought I was, I was only trying to check up on her, like, how you doing? I just felt like I was dragging, like I was the one, like, you know, checking. Ha, she told me the same thing, that, oh, this person is also like, they're not even talking right now, like, she's always checking up, like, I was like, oh, seems like the person wants to.
On their own, alone, yeah?
I'm like, oh, that's true, like, you can just tell me, like, I don't, I'm just trying my best to like, you know, be a good person to like, check up on you.
No, but so, no, but if I'm being honest though, like that, that person could be going through, that person is definitely going through.
Yeah, add all to this nice, you know?
That person's going through a lot, and then you, you know what they, they're sitting there.
The, the, the honesty is that everyone is going through a lot.
So, no, everybody's going through a lot, yeah, but not, not everybody knows how to handle.
Everybody's going through something.
Yeah, yes.
But there, there are some weights that have, okay.
And again, and again, so many people know how to, like, our tolerance and being able to handle these things different, you understand? So, some people, like, do, do, let's say like, you're, you're basing it on like weights now, so when people's five K G. They can't even carry, but you see some carrying hundred K G and you're like, ah, how are you carrying, and then you're, and then you're. But it's life, some people's tolerance, you know, does not hit like. Like that, so that person might actually be going through a lot, and then, what I've actually noticed is that when people are giving up on situations, they always want to be left alone. You understand? And again, like when people don't want to be held accountable, you understand, for something, they prefer to isolate themselves. So that person will say, oh, Oscar, what's going on? You said you're going to do this, you're going to, ah, no, people always want to remove themselves.
Funny thing, I like being, in the red way, I like being like accountable, like, let's say for example, let's say for example, I go to the gym, right, and. You say, maybe I didn't go to the gyms for maybe two, two days, and you're like, oh, I thought you were gonna go to the gym. He's only giving me personally, he only giving me like that ginger to be like, I want to, I want to go to the gym. So you will not be like.
I get that, but some, some people don't like that.
Yeah, that's.
Bruh, I've been in situations with some people that don't like to be held accountable, they would intentionally even break up with you. Because they tried to hold them accountable. I'm dead serious, man. Like I've been in those situations. Like, and, like this cuts across, like, you know, again, like, look, you know, I don't make relationship now with guy and girl, cause some people are very, very dumb. But see, this cuts across, this cuts across both for guy. Because I was there, he's saying this cut across first for guy and girl. But yeah, man, give me your number, please, give me your number, I'll call you, hey, what's up?
Give me your handle.
Four days, no, that's the thing.
Because I feel like this is, is a, is a building trust kind of moment. If you can go from hundred to number, then there's trust, then it's intentional. Do you get what I mean? It's intentional, because that first time is just a fluke.
I can just give my number, but. Go from there, I shift to there.
If you can, if you can make that transition, then you know that when you call, she'll pick up.
So, so how long is it going to take to make that? How long?
Maybe like a day, it depends, your vibe might always be catching, like, you know, switch, or it might take sometimes, couple of days.
Give me your number, we jump on the call, hey.
But let me ask you something, now, let's say you collect, you know, like your number. And like, you don't really, me, I just feel like, when I call the girls, like handle, I just scroll through our pictures and like, let me even see what you're up to. You know, let me, let me, let me vibe with you, you know, that kind of thing, let me see what you're up to, that kind of thing.
But people are not putting their best self online.
You feel so.
Sorry, people are putting their best selves online and not their actual self. Like, whatever it is that you're seeing online is a premeditated.
Yeah, but at least it's. At least you're seeing something about number, you know, it would.
No, number, hey, like, I will text you, hey, like, whenever, let's, let's, let's jump on the call, or let's have a call. Yes, and then we jump on the call and then we speak twenty minutes, okay, like if I'm feeling it, okay, yes, like, let's hang out.
I see your vibe, Sha, you're, you're more of a.
No, this, this has nothing to do with control, this is just, no, no.
Let's do it now or not, that's free. I feel you, I feel you. It's not bad, no, it's not bad.
I mean, cause before social media, it was not about this.
It's not bad, it's not bad.
Yeah, it was not about this.
Before social media, it's not letter, it's just like. You write, you write letter, then you put it inside your, you put it inside your notebook.
This, this, this time I wrote a letter back in high school, then my guys got hold of the letter from the babe, read it, and were laughing. I got your laugh, see, that's it, that's your own good meal.
I literally now know what was in the letter.
I know now, writing a bitch now. You know, when I sent you on Google said, this is one, blah, I was writing somewhere, I don't know what's but, I consulted my writing self. I went to my guy to him, you write some lines. Sat me down like this.
No, but I honestly don't think I ever wrote letter.
I've never wrote a letter.
To anybody in high school.
I think I did once.
I must have just walked up to the person, and then all those, erase them, pay some kind of plea, all those guys are dumb, this guy.
Then love was, love was, I see love was sweet.
It was heavy, it was mysterious.
That person you're with, you're gonna marry the person, like.
Those girls back then, even though they were doing all back, doing um tread, they were the finest at that point.
Yeah, at that point.
Like it was, I see, like there was no other person that could be fired at this person, with the hairstyle that they were doing.
This one baby, ah, god.
What happened to the baby?
Nothing. Her perfume was etched in my memory. I, I could not get rid of it for years. I'm serious.
Are you serious?
Eventually, I don't know what it smells like, I feel like if I should ever come across it.
You'd be like.
It's gonna trigger like. Like, I'm, I'm serious, like.
She met, dude.
I swear.
She had a really, really strong perfume, and it was, ah, I was shooting above my weight, she's my senior. Do you get what I mean? So that one, I was already, I was already.
Was it in like, secondary school or?
Secondary school, it was secondary, secondary school, she's not even going back in those days, right? So she was my senior, so I was like, behind, behind by a lot, you get.
The fact that he knew that he was.
But I said, no, no, I must go.
No, but did you, did you shoot your shot?
Ah, everything.
You shot everything.
Bruh, the team went back, go back to center.
You tell me, tell me, tell me, tell me, what happened, what happened?
She don't say, this is a good one, because you know, obviously like I'm your senior.
No, but she was fine though.
I said she was the finest girl I've ever saw, my, my friends took it and laughed at me. Ah, they does me, oh, so I get some, I'm, I was just thinking, for you, you feel like back then in secondary school, I feels like, bruh, when you have something for someone, it's just. It's like first time, it's just out of the moon. Come, your eyes like, wow, now, you don't know where it's old age.
Yeah, you're like, it is what it is, man. It is what it is.
No, no, but I, I'll be dead serious with you, there was actually, there was actually this girl in primary school. That, like, actually, like, trust me, like, she was so fine, like, fine as fuck, like, I mean, fine. And then I left that school, I did not see this girl again until, I think I saw her mysteriously on Facebook. And they was there talking, you know, and all, but man, I was just a jackass, man.
Oh, I said, I was just a jackass.
No, no, but like, you know, said, and again, like she still had like the same face, like she was still fine and all, you know, just catching up. Bro, there were actually so many girls in my primary school, like I remember like this babe, Frances, her name is Frances, Frances Okun. I remember that girl. We were in the same class for like, premier, so like, premier one A, one A, two A, three A. Then five A, like when, like, everyone's saying, fine girl like this, you don't know what happened. One day, I don't know what happened, so this was weird, my, this was, this was weird, the crush vanished. Primary school, I don't know, but I don't know what happened, I don't know what happened, Sha, the girl shit on herself.
But it's primary school now, I didn't need to primary school too. But it's primary school now. I didn't need to primary school too.
You did?
Yeah.
Why?
I was seeing, see, see, I let, you feel the story, my was, my was, I think my mom's scar. I'm serious. Bruh, I didn't want to say, well, something is funny, something, I was like, mm, mm. I don't know, actually, I've just used the restroom.
Like, yeah, like, I'm like.
I said, no, I'll hold it till I get home. So I was in the car holding this thing like this, turn like this, twist like this, bruh, you're dropped. Bruh.
Damn.
Since that day. I need to wipe it like this. No, no, but actually, like.
I don't know, I was, and like I said, I was primary school, man.
Dude, don't, don't do it, I've been born at once.
No, that's, that's, that's the only time I remember it happening as a kid. Cause I was really young, right? I was really young. But since that day, I just knew in my head, guy, when you, when the time.
Once you're pressed.
Just, just go and download it.
Bruh.
And I get it all. And it was, I don't know if it happened to you, ah, primary school, I don't know if it happened to you.
Hmm.
But someone also pooped in class, back then, it was primary school, so come with things, so they would bring, suspected everyone, bring them out, and they just smell them.
Ah, man. Alright, literally, what's it, what's it, probably two, probably three. Ah, forget it, it was you, oh, man.
No, no, but this one, yeah. It was crazy, man.
This one, as in, this, as in, the embarrassment, like, like.
But we're young now, like, six, seven, eight.
Imagine I've been feeling this chick for like three years.
She's gonna mess up.
Ah, the thing just rubbed from my eyes. I was like, ah, ah.
You're like, oh, no.
Ah, goodie, ah, no, no. Yeah, man, but I know we should add to those guys, man, that kind of like to you, like, wherever it is that they are, right? Like, it happened, like, it's life.
Yeah, yeah.
It's life.
But you know, that story they mentioned, though, that is actually bad stories. So there's something that happened to me again in primary school.
Hmm.
Right. So there was this, in the entire school, there was a pretty lady.
A, ah, not a girl.
No, 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 a girl, no.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no, not like, like, we're small, I was like.
Oh, no, this one, this one, you also said lady.
Yeah, but like, now, like.
For a variety, they look when you, when you pass you.
So it was, it was the thing, the funny thing was, like, I think she was like two classes below me.
Hmm.
But we all just knew that this person was different, maybe she was like half, like, you know, mixed or something, but we didn't know she was just really, really fine.
Hmm.
You know, so there was the advent of primary school, there was no Facebook, right, during that time. But then when you move into, like, secondary school, you start interacting with Facebook.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Then people started looking for their primary school.
People that.
People classmates. I thought I was the only one who by search to her.
Are you serious?
I couldn't find. It was when I got into secondary school, like, you're not going to university, then I met a couple of my primary school mates, and they were actually talking about this person, like.
Again.
Yeah, like, have you, no, nobody. And we don't know how to get in contact with her, but like, it was just mysterious, because it was just not, just me, it was just like, everyone was trying to, like, figure out. Who was this girl?
Yeah.
What's this time? Yeah, like, who is she, what's she up to now? Because obviously, like, who you are in primary school will be different from who you are now.
Yeah, how about now, though?
Now, I don't have that number, so I get in my life, so.
Are you serious?
Yeah.
Oh, shit.
It was crazy, it was crazy.
Honestly, like, people from, people from my primary school, I'm not sure.
And I think that's what, where Facebook blew at that time, because people were looking for their.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Classmates, it was the days.
Yeah, like, like, that was actually, like, the vibe population for Facebook, because everywhere you joined it, so, so far, you knew the person's name.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just like, exactly, exactly.
Just search and then, oh.
I think that is one good thing about Facebook. I don't really use Facebook, but I think that's one thing, if you want to, like, look for old friends.
Hmm.
It's very easy to just search a name, just scroll through and just find them.
Yeah, one thousand percent. Honestly, like.
Hey, what's good? Are you, you're my city, I didn't know. Do you wanna, do you wanna hang out, do you wanna, you know?
Nah, like, like, primary school, there's been so many people that, I don't think I've actually searched for anybody again. Not because I have an issue with anybody, but, like, just going online, you can search for people, and. I mean, I know, like, because, so I went to staff school, University of Riba, and my church was in University of Riba as well. So I was, I like, I usually see fifty percent of my, of people in my school at church too.
Yeah.
So I was always, I, I, I got tired, I'm dead serious.
You're seeing and stuff.
So I will see you.
But it should be fun.
I will see you Monday, I will see you Monday to Friday.
But it should be fun for you.
You later, I will not see you Saturday. On Sunday, I will see you, I feel again. Oh, my god.
But then, that means there was always jazz, though. There was always jazz, there was always, like, things to talk about and stuff like that.
No, 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 like, there was actually a lot, like, like.
And then during that, during like summer time off, like, you, those guys were always missing in church on Sundays.
It was fun. It was fun. And again, like, we all grew up together, like, we, like, like, we grew up together. There are people that I, that I, like, there are people I literally. Knew in primary one. I still have a friend of mine, like, I knew in primary one, where me and him were making aunt's house. Like, we're molding, like, sand on our leg, and stop, and then we can get grass cutter. And then we'll be making with sand, like, literally, bro, like, no joke, literally, like, we'll make.
Sorry, wait, grass cutter, is it not?
No, like, grasshopper.
Grasshopper.
Okay, okay.
Not grass cutter, you know, like, we'll make all those things, put the road and stuff, remove the wings and stuff like that, like, gosh, it's crazy. It's crazy, man, like, childhood is.
Childhood was fun.
It's fun, man.
It was fun.
It was fun, or the phones gave me to scatter everything.
Destroyed you.
No, it started with DSTV first, Cartoon Network.
Yeah.
I was very sorry, DSTV, Cartoon Network.
Nickelodeon.
I never heard those shit, sorry to God. My father never saw the, he never saw the reason, any reason to put cable in our house. Never had them. Let's talk about this happily married woman that's on Tinder. She's thirty-seven, by the way, I think. Yes, I'll call her Cynthia, cause I don't want to give a reaction. Happily married, but looking for a little extra phone, with his permission, of course. What do you guys?
Now you find out now. Now you see, I will, do you swipe, do you interact, do you send a message?
Interact with who?
I'm sorry, continue, what were you saying?
With who?
Yeah?
No, I have limit.
Alright.
Someone's wife, no, no. The, even, even the Bible speaks about it now.
Yeah.
The Bible speaks about it, that it is worse, it is better for charcoal to be burning on your head. It's on, it's, it's in, it's in Proverbs. It's better for charcoal to be burning on your head and for you to go and live with another man's wife. So I don't, ah, no, no.
Well, he's the highest one of disrespect, though.
Bruh.
You know disrespect is.
But people don't know, though. People don't know.
How would you know?
Bruh, people don't know.
Still, still, still.
Yeah, bruh, do you know how many, do you know how many married, married women are out here, bruh? Just download Tinder.
No, I can't.
And just be tapping.
I can one on.
You'll see.
Oh, this is not your first encounter.
Bruh, there are a lot. You actually see, like, women with kids, even see some of them post a kid's Tinder.
Yeah, for real? Wait, you put a kid on Tinder?
No, not their kids, but like, them with their kids, like, cause pictures, I'm guessing.
I'll be like, hey, I'm married, you want, oh.
So it's not gonna be, okay, see. So it's not be, I'm like, like, I'm just talking for talking sake. So, like, like, bunch of psychopaths, bro.
No, the really, really, for real.
Bunch of psychopaths, bro.
Bruh, 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 those, bruh, crazy.
Like, like, why are you posting your kid on, on this thing? Like, okay, so you want people to.
I thought Tinder was a dating, um.
Baba.
And the problem with dating is to know the person and know, like, everything in the person. So if the person is, is a mom.
He's not just even dating.
You know, it's kind of like, I mean.
No, but you can, but you can put it there, though.
Yeah, like, I'm a mom of two, three, I'm a family, so.
And don't get me wrong.
There, like, like.
Somebody to put it there, and I actually respect them. They tell you, I'm a mom of two boys. I'm looking for somebody that is going to do this, do this, do that. If you're here for hook up, please move on, I'm not interested.
Well, I, I have a question, too. Let me, let me, let me talk like you, I have a question. But like, but like, I, I feel like most of what is detailed, like, if I just did for nacks.
Uh.
Ninety percent.
Ninety percent.
For me.
Ninety percent.
Most guys that come and be like, oh, I live, I live on that site, they just want to just knock, and that's it.
Ninety percent.
Yes, yes, look, look at it this way, this is how I see it.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Is, is, let me use analogy, is a knife a good or a bad thing?
A knife.
A kitchen knife.
Both.
It depends on who is using it.
You think it's both good and bad?
Can be good and.
I think it's bad. So, on its own, doesn't, can, will it classify a, a knife as an object or a verb or, or its own personality?
Not necessarily, no.
Right. Let me move to another different analogy. Is physics a good thing or a bad thing?
On the ground, good.
Why do you say it's good?
Yeah, of course, because that's about, about almost everything that we have. But of course, you have, you're outside nuclear, atomic.
So the thing is, like, my analogy is, like, in the end, an object is.
What you use it for.
Neutral.
Hmm.
Do you get my point? It's neutral, it's, it doesn't have, it, it is like AI, like, when the advent of AI.
Hmm.
It's neutral, it's what you use it or how you use it that determines the narrative, right? Because originally, I thought, like, oh, this is what Tinder could have originally been for, but I know somebody that's actually married and met a babe from there.
Yeah.
Do you get my point, like?
No, no, don't get me wrong.
Do you get my, I was, yeah, do you get, like, straight up? And then I'm like, okay, there's the original intent.
Hmm.
And you that is on there, if you choose to meet people there, you know, have to have that, like, regard, like, this is what you're looking for. This is your filter, and you know that, you have to go through it, right? So, if not, because I, I see where the problem is, because when you come here. You all know, the system is very isolated in some sense, like, getting into social communities may not really be as easy.
Yeah.
We felt like it was back home and stuff like that. So, in and of itself, it's just like the internet is an enabler, right? But then, it's how you use the enabler that really matters.
No, I agree with you, but then the truth of matter is this. All of that intent, yes, right, one thousand one percent, but the people that have now come to use it are using it for. The purpose in which you, like, are using it for a different use case.
Yeah.
Which is most likely for hooking up, um, it's, bro, I keep on saying it, my ex-girlfriend, I met her on Tinder. And you know her?
Yeah, I think I'm.
Yeah. I, like, I met her on Tinder, and trust me, that, that's, and that's what I've had, like, I've had. She's one of the few, few people that I've had one of the best relationships with, you understand? So, you, you could meet somebody on Tinder, you could meet them, you know, on the street. You could meet them in church, you could meet them wherever it is. If I could meet someone in church and then you, Baba, everything goes sideways.
True.
And you do everything, you know, that you never would do with somebody that I met on Tinder. So while I understand that, but then the true matter is that. The intentions and what people go on, all of these things to do, like a dating site to do, is usually, listen. I'm here to knock. You could go out, and then you could now go ahead and meet the person, after that, see that that person has a good attitude or a good personality. You know, oh, yeah, like, I actually, I actually like this person, I actually want to hang out with this person. But most of the time, most guys, quote unquote. And again, most women, from what I've heard, is that they use it for attention, attention seeking. Like, bruh, there is this one, I, I should show you it on Twitter, though. She said she joined just yesterday.
I don't really see it, though, but like, how many?
How, how?
Eight thousand.[1513.21]